Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Well, I like to talk about the phone call I received about, I'm sure we all had the same phone call about the unsightly.
Yeah, we've all had the same phone call. It's all gone to the director.
Okay.
Or, yeah, or Bruce. Yeah, I think we can bring it up during the special constables report.
Yeah.
We have approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded. I'm gonna just mute here.
Leslie, you just pick who one of that. Okay, minutes of the previous minute, the meeting. Anybody note any errors or omissions?
Larry.
Nope. Okay. Can we have approval of the minutes? A move. Paul seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any contrary minded? Motion is carried. Business arising from the minutes. Draft express of interest for developers. Any, yeah.
But basically what I wanted to do before I got started on that, so basically I'm working on the, our land inventory. First, so that I can see what, what we have, so council can look at what, what we have and what is available.
Yeah, can, do we have a piece of property to add to that now? It used to be the road between the jail, the courthouse and Anglican church where that road's closed off?
I guess basically that, that, that will be a lot, one of the lots that are identified, yes.
Yeah, yeah. The only, the only comment I have about that lot, this is just a personal opinion. If it was ever developed, it should be in, in nature with the surrounding development, the jail and the, or the courthouse of the Anglican church. You didn't see a glass building put there. It would really distract from the, from the other two properties. But anyway, we can talk about that later on.
Yeah, I mean, definitely, definitely gonna be on the, on the inventory, but, and still gonna be, council can decide on what, what we want to do with it and.
Yeah, I was already asked about it too, so. Yeah. Okay. So, okay, quarterly meeting of council, are we going quarterly meetings or?
That, that was the, at the last committee, the whole meeting that, that you weren't in.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor and so there was the discussion, counselor. Sonya had brought, brought that up and talked about having meetings at restaurants and things like, like that. And it was thought by the committee that we have a discussion because you weren't there to offer your opinion. So that's why that's on there.
Well, the first one will be in July with Stanley Cup parade. Yeah, you, you, you've answered my concerns in there about council meeting because it, it would be seen as a council meeting, so we have to be careful. The only concern I have, that's happened to me before, is the public seat council sitting around a table at a restaurant. Oh, who's paying for that? What are they going on about? So you have to be very careful about that. Yeah. Other than that, if it's quarterly, it's, it works. I guess the only other thought is why, when we talked about it earlier, we have 12 restaurants. So, we need to conscious, while there's 12 and two more opening up in the town very soon, I bet with one of them. So it'll be 14 restaurants in the town boundary from, from Sobeys down to the other end of town.
That's, that's perfect because we've got 14 quarters before the next election.
You haven't counted already.
Yeah. Um, yeah. But those are my thoughts. It's just the, the public perception of us meeting at a dinner table. It has to be clear that, you know, we are just meeting, it's brainstorming, no form of motion. We're paying for our coffee.
Yeah.
Taxpayer isn't paying for our coffee.
Maybe just, we could maybe do quarterly meetings or a couple, like maybe at the fire hall or somewhere. Do town hall meetings maybe instead. I don't know.
Yeah.
Might be enough, might be a thought to do a town hall meeting a couple times a year.
For. I know, you brought that up before and I mentioned it, I was just, I mentioned it to the former warden coming to my office a week or so ago, and they went around the county. Uh, they went the Waymouth, they went the Bear, where they went to the islands, they went Digby Neck, and they had no more than three people at each meeting. Yeah. They just found that town hall meetings just, you know, didn't work. We did, we tried our budget presentation at time, we had a few of, but well, you know, my motto is public engagement through enrage, but so we do something, get them mad, then have that town hall meeting. And then tell them what's really going on. But yeah, something we can discuss. Any idea, anybody have any idea when first one should be?
Of course, right now. When the COVID's over, yeah.
Yeah, it's up in the air right now.
Yeah.
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 So I guess we wait and see when we can do it and then pick a date.
Yeah. One thing too, uh, uh, is the new, the turning the tide folks that are up at the arena now. Some people who are interested in the community and stuff, maybe an option or an opportunity to do it, maybe up there something like to, just food for thought for them.
Yeah, I've, I've invited them a number of times to council, Mike, because I attended their sessions a year ago.
Yeah.
They held it in SCC, well, more than a year ago now, yeah. Yeah, it's a thought. We'll see when the premier allows us to go outdoors. And we'll pick some dates. Maybe we have a barbecue sometime during the summer. Okay, CEO report.
So, in the planning department, we've had four development permits issued and one zoning confirmation letter. And generating $400 in fees for April. And one, one development permit for the expansion of a fish plant on Burke Street. And one is a single family dwelling on Thomas Road. Wheelchair ramp, and I'll use the term loosely on, at Nine Water Street.
I saw that.
And deck in a bench swing at 1160 King Street.
Yeah.
So in the building department, uh, we issued four building permits. And generating a hundred, a thousand and thirty-eight dollars in fees. So, at 112 King Street, a single family dwelling. 35 Burke Street, the expansion of the fish plant, 27 Racket Road, the single family dwelling. And 27 Thomas Road, single family dwelling.
Yeah. Is that 11,000 right for 27 Racket? Doesn't look, it doesn't, doesn't seem right, but maybe.
That's what they had on the report, but they, probably because of, you know, the fee is, is based on, on the value and the value is given by, by the builder, so.
Yeah, just, does the building department challenge that or do they look at it and say, this is, yeah, I just, you know, we know it's more than $11,000. It's a house.
Yeah, well, I think they spent that much today there, I would say.
Okay.
So, yeah.
But no, yeah, there's been no activity since, but I just, yeah.
Yeah, but anyway, I mean, for the most part, yeah, I, I found that odd and maybe it is, but it, it it doesn't, because only $132, so, I mean, if it was 110, it would have been, it would have been probably $150, 130, so maybe that's supposed to be 110,000. It could be a typo, right? It could be, but that's the way it was on the report that we got from, from the building department. So that's what I put down, so. I would say probably 110.
Yeah, because PVSC uses that as a, an assessment, won't they, that first permit? Yeah, so, okay.
Now, I'll probably, hopefully they'll question it.
Yeah.
The fire department, I got no report. Uh, under the office of CEO, the Digby Marketing and Promotion Leviate, uh, and is has received the royal assent. And it will come into effect, effect on proclamation. The once a town district have passed the respective bylaws, here to advise the minister of municipal affairs. And we wish to have that act to come into force and discussions with guests. Southern, Southern Land CEO, for the municipal district of Digby, they're suggesting that the bylaws be worked on in the fall with an April 1st, 2022 is a very big to the act's proclamation. Well, it's almost a year down the road, so.
Yeah. I think Tom, I don't know, it was just discussed that committee the whole, I missed, I was in bug wash that night, but one of the reasons to delay is just because of COVID stress that businesses are under and it's probably, even though this isn't costing them any money, it's just probably not a good time to, to do it.
That's, that's what we, we felt too administratively from both sides, we felt, felt the same thing, do I think that you have to get that type of feedback from his counsel as well, so. And the, the timing is just, is unfortunate, the timing. So.
Anybody got any comments on that?
Uh, we, we should make sure that when we do put it through, if we're gonna be looking for a start date of say either January 1st or April 1st of next year, that we give the businesses enough time to be able to set up something in their system to be able to collect the money. So give them, give them a little bit of time for troubleshooting, not dropping on them the month, the month before, so give them some lead time.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, they, they knew it was coming, but it's been delayed, it's been a long period of time. It's not on the top of their mind right now. Surviving is on top of their mind.
The senior management team met and we discussed the four day work week. The Canada summer jobs, we received confirmation that we received uh, four positions, two BIC counselors and two public work gardeners. That we had applied for, we discussed the adopt a flower box program. So, I guess that's a good, good thing. Instead of, we had sponsored there, so maybe we should change that to adopt, to sponsor. And Deputy Mayor Bartlett didn't like the word sponsor, so.
Yeah.
And dog license fees. So, ba- basically, and I think it was brought up, I think it was council, McCormick that brought up dog fees and, and that, and so we, and, you know, there has been a, a concern that basically the dog tags are very, very expensive. For an annual dog, I mean, we don't, we don't even take enough in to pay for the tag. And so, I guess basically, what, what we would like to recommend to council is that we, we amend the bylaw, we have to amend the bylaw for this to happen, but to have, still have license fees, but it'd be a one-time charge, right? And then that way, what tags we, we have, we can, we can use up when they're, when our tags are gone and we can get another supply. Doesn't matter whether we take 10 years to get rid of the supply, because I'm gonna ask Bruce, what's the minimum that we can buy, Bruce?
Or what's this?
The dog tags.
The, the cost, the annual fee would be $25. Before we had it. Yeah, so, sorry?
How, how many dogs, how many dog tags do we have to buy when we buy them? What's the minimum order?
A minimal order is 100.
Yeah.
And it's, that's, ranges around 200, I think $60 or something like that, so we don't even get near enough to.
Yeah.
To reimburse it.
100, we wouldn't, we wouldn't even break even.
No, just, just a suggestion, instead of doing dog tags, I, I'm, I know they're kind of big, I mean, for our dog that doesn't have a tag, why do we even have to give them a tag? Why can't we just give them an email that states that this is your certificate for your dog? You, you don't really need it. We'd never put it on our dog anyway.
I was just, I was just going by the idea of what the municipality did, where it was an annual sum, just a one-time shot of $25. Uh, because where we've done it in the past, where the spader knew that there was a slight difference of $5, I think it was, in the cost of the tag. But it's just that some years we have 17 dogs get registered. You know, last year we had 22. This year, you know, it's, people are not out because of the COVID and everything else, but I mean, we never, in the four years I've been here, we've never, you know, got back our money per se, what we spent out on tags.
Yeah, I, I would just give them a certificate type thing, like even the food inspector does that. Now, we don't get stickers anymore. They just send us an email, says here's your certificate, good for a year, see you next year type thing. So maybe we don't even need the physical dog tag.
Your freezer doesn't run away though, would have to get.
Yeah.
Dog catcher.
Yeah.
So, yeah, but. They're tracked down.
Yeah, but you still have your dog's name on it. It's not gonna have a leash on it.
The dog doesn't, if the dog runs down the street and you're not around, how's the dog catcher always?
Well, well, most dogs that get, get away don't even have a collar on.
No, but they should.
Yeah, oh yeah, but I mean, most dogs that get away would have a collar. Or wouldn't have a collar, and the ones that do would have their name on it anyway. 90% of, of good dog owners have the name and number of the dog.
Yeah, well, that's what I was saying to Council Sonya, he's saying, besides knowing that they, we, they have a dog, it's a good ID tag, you know, for your dog.
That is exactly why, the, to give it, because, you know, in theory, if your dog has a tag on it and it does get loose away from you or gets loose and it gets picked up or, you know, or even if a neighbor or somebody down the street catches it and, you know, it's a friendly dog, it may show up at somebody's house. And if there's a tag on it, at least they can say, oh, it's registered with the town of Digby, well, call the town of Digby and see if I can find out who the dog, dog this is, right? And that, that's what the tags are for, is more for dog identification than, than anything, right?
Maybe, maybe Mike, that's how we, we sell it, you know, register your dog, but it's also the advantage, it's, it's an ID tag to identify your dog when it gets free. And it helps you, helps recover your dog, you know.
Yeah, I'd just be interested in the, the size of it, because right now, you have a dog tag with the dog's name on it probably and number on the back, then you got the vaccination and all those other shots that they get from the vet, so the, the dog's wearing two or three tags now, if, if you're a proper dog, right? So just as long as they're smaller than what they are before, they used to be huge.
No, I mean.
Yeah, they're not that big.
Do you have a sample, Bruce?
I, I think they're one inch by one inch, they'll be downstairs near office, but they're about the size of a 50 cent piece.
Yeah, they're big, they're big.
Well, not really. All they, I mean, what they send me informs that they're usually uh, probably less than an inch. I don't know if I have one of the forms here or not, but. I'll take a look there in a minute, but.
I think just the fact that you easily could ID the dog is also to run down the street is, is worth paying.
Yeah.
What, $24?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would save a lot of work for the dog catcher.
Yeah. I mean, we, I ran into problems where a couple of months back, a gentleman was bit by another dog.
Yeah.
And those pet owners didn't have any tags or anything. And, yeah, it's the same size. Same exact size.
Yeah.
That's what, Leslie, a quarter?
Yeah.
Yeah. This is like a nickel. This is like the size of a nickel.
Mike, you must have a small dog. That's too big.
Well, most people do have small dogs.
Uh, well, the other fact is, is we got quite a few. We gotta get our money up.
So, that's, that's the, what they come on, there's 100 of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, that's from, that's 2017, and that's the amount that was, that was left. So there was only, I think, 17 that went off of this, this rule here, so.
We've got enough dog tags that we don't have to buy another dog tag for the next 50 years, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah.
So we might as well use them, we spent the money, we might as well use them up, we can just, they do have the year on, but we can use that as identification number, it's 2017, for instance, 01 or 05 or 20 or 100, right? So, you know, it, they, they still can be used, it just won't expire.
Yeah. Yeah. I've recovered a dog in my neighborhood twice in the last few days.
Thank you, we could probably laser engrave over that date.
It might, you know, it's, it's, it's a big, big issue, we can use it, we can use it as part of the identification number. Yeah.
Okay.
It doesn't say expire, it, it doesn't say expires, it just says the year and then the number underneath of it, so use that whole thing as a number and then that, that's good, right?
Better not to waste them.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, don't waste them. So, we have a motion that, yeah, there you go. Could we have a motion to go to council to wait, make the dog fees an, or a one-time charge or, I couldn't say lifetime, but I shouldn't say that.
Motion that we send that to council, that the minimum fee for a dog license be $25 annually?
I'll second it.
Annually?
What you wanted, Bruce?
No, one time.
No, one, one time.
One time, oh, one count.
One time, yeah.
Yeah.
So, you're agreeing to second that?
Yeah.
Mike, okay, that changed.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye, any a's?
Okay, Clean, Clean and Apples River, Katie McLean of Clean and Apples River has responded to a request from the director of public work concerning trees. So, they constantly keep an eye out for grant opportunities that will support the purchase of trees. So in order to be able to make an application in timely manner when it becomes available, we'd like to consider some advanced planning and would ask council to consider to provide a standing letter of support, so basically, uh, what it does, it would be cut. They require that as part of the thing, uh, of the application process, but usually it's very time sensitive when an application's, then the window is small for applications to get in. And then time, if the timing isn't right, council can prove a letter of support. But if we have a standing letter of support for applications to, for giving trees from, through, through TARP, which basically is no, usually they end up very little, if any, cost from, from TARP, the grant usually pays for the trees. Is that right?
Yeah, that's right. I think I'll ask the director of public work, so the trees are great, getting trees for next, even better, but having the plan of where they would go if we got them, was even better, do we have a plan?
We just chose some locations. Council was asked if they had any locations, and we did plant some in the locations chosen last year. Uh, the majority of them went out to the old BIC building, uh, someone went to Fisherman's Park and then the rest of them went on, where'd they go? Montego Row. Down where all the trees were cut down. We put, we chose places where trees were cut down and replanted, was what we did. We always, that we did last council last year, if there's any locations they wanted to see trees put back, so.
Okay. So there, have they sort of all been dealt with? Do you still have some more locations left, Ed, or?
We definitely have lost locations. We're always cutting old, old dead trees down, they need to be replaced, so. Some we don't replace because they're in bad, bad locations, but we always try to replace them, so. We cut a tree down, it's nice to plant two back, so.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, and you're wandering around town, you see a good location, let Tom and Ed know. A good location.
The old park beside the jail, a lot of them come down there.
Yep, and see, that'd be a great spot, because those trees are, they're very brittle tree, and we could put, put more, more trees in there. We actually, I actually purchased four, uh, for Second Avenue there, because we cut down a bunch of trees where we put the new waterline and stuff. And actually have a shop to be planted this week, so.
Good. Yeah. Anybody having an issue with that? Clean and Apples River did a nice job on the gardens, it's the racket, the last, last week they were there, clean those up, they look good. I expect we're gonna lose some trees there, with the bee, there's three beavers out there.
Yeah.
Tom, you want that in a motion form, just a letter? We can make that a motion, that we give the standing letter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be best.
Yeah.
On, on record.
Yeah. Anybody wanna make that a motion for, specifically for Kirk?
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second it.
I'll second it. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yep.
Hey, next one, salary scale level adjustments and survey. So I've completed this salary survey as required under the HR policy. Number 2014 dash zero two, salary administration. And drafted a report and recommended salary scale adjustments for council consideration. Table later in this feeding, under in, in camera. And for council consideration.
Yeah.
Yeah. The town BIC for the 2021 season, so basically we've, we've commenced with the COVID plan for the 2021 season. We have protocols in accordance to the provincial state of emergency health protection act orders. We will be operating this year with, with reduced staff levels. Be open five days per week in June and, and September, October and seven days a week during July and August. So basically, the, the staffing levels, there are, we usually have four full-time staff. And then students, if, if we get the grants. This year, we're gonna be with two full-time staff. And two, we had two students. So the students won't be until July and August, that's when the students will be, so that's why we'll be at a seven, we can go to a seven-day operation. In shoulder season, we figure we'll just stick with, with a five-day, a week. And usually though, we will be open over the weekend. Right? That's usually when you'll get, if, if travel is allowed, we'll be able to get, have more, have people on, on the weekends. And it also will correspond with the farmer's market as well, because they rely on the use of the washrooms in order for them to operate, so.
Tom, did one of our former BIC staff last year, did she come back? She, you said you were sending her an offer yet?
Two, both, yeah, but both are kind of full-time, have, have returned from the 2019 season, so, yeah.
Yeah. I, I heard from tourism people that they, they thought they did a wonderful job, so. Plus one's bilingual, so.
Yeah. So COVID restrictions, the town hall is currently closed to the public due to the current lockdown. And will be closed until lockdown down is lifted. Town hall staff are working within the town hall Monday to Friday and observing social distancing and wearing masks in the common areas or when we can't social distance. So we're observing everything. But this is in our environment, we, we tried it with, with the first lockdown, we tried a little bit of working from home for certain individuals. And nobody seemed to really enjoy it. And so we're, we're just sticking. And I think the municipality is basically doing the, the same, same, same thing in, in their office. And so.
Yeah, with, with the office closed now and the tax bill due the end of this month, are we putting extension on those for people who usually come in and pay it? Or I know I was told I had to do it online. So I don't know whether, you know, other citizens can do that or not. I'm able to. But are we going to extend that without any interest till this is over and the office is open?
We're still using the Dropbox, are we not?
Yeah, we drop, the Dropbox is, is still, still there. We have, we, we deal with people on a one-on-one, on basis usually. And if somebody calls and say, listen, you know, you're closed, how can I pay the bill? Well, we try to encourage them to do all the electronic stuff if, if they can do it. We tell them that if they want to drop us off a check, then use the drop-off. And, and some will, will come and drop off cash to us.
Okay.
And wait. And through the Dropbox, and then we'll type, if they want the receipt immediately, we'll give them our receipt.
Okay, perfect.
So we, we've tried to, to do our best to accommodate people as best we, best we can. We, we understand that it's that people have their, their challenges and that some people are set, very set in their ways and, and won't, won't convert. I mean, I had one, one gentleman that he's a businessman and I said, well, you know, don't you do on, no, don't do any online banking, not gonna, never will, never, you know, on, on, on. And so anyway, we, we dealt with that one. And just like we deal with everyone on a one-on-one basis if required. So.
Okay. Um, just also to mention, we always bring up that you can also go into the bank. So you can go in face-to-face. And generally, they, if they have their bill, they can pay at the bank as if they were paying at town hall.
Yeah, but the bank fees are just atrocious.
Well, we've mentioned to go to the cheaper bank.
Okay, then that's it. I know that I haven't, I guess the last item that I've got is the deck signage for Deckers Trail. And the sign has been completed. The designer still wants to remain, remain anonymous. And looking forward to council's thoughts. He states, it stated that it's an honor to, to do, though it wasn't his idea, only the design is. And thank, that's for giving him the opportunity to do it. So the woman in the chick represent Brenda and her son Decker. And this setting sun is a reflection to have a nice day. And the wild rose is found abundantly here. So the slab of wood was donated by Freddie Ross. The total cost of that sign is a big fat zero.
Yeah, looks good.
So, you know, I included a picture and the actual sign is in my office right now. So if somebody does want to, a member of council wants to stop in and look at it for a can, we can make that happen. So.
I'm going to assume it's heavily varnished or?
He's, he, he got, he put, I think he put three or four coats of whatever. He, somebody recommended a certain type of varnish or coating to put on it. So, yeah. Pretty well.
Okay. Anybody got any comments on it?
No, it looks good.
Yeah. To make sure it's well melted, you know. Where abouts down right where near where the house was? The house is gone. Nobody's been down there. But somewhere's along that trail, Tom?
I don't, I.
Yeah.
Don't know. I know that we're going to be putting a memorial bench there as well with the public works.
Yeah.
Putting a memorial bench there. So Ed, you know roughly where we were going to put that signage or what your, your thoughts were on, on that?
Oh, we're gonna put it right there next to his house right off of Montague Row going towards the water. So that'd be the same side of the benches on.
Yeah. He walked that trail all the time. Okay, moving on. Director of Finance.
Okay, the report is there. And I guess most of it's self-explanatory. The safe restart funding, I just point out that we have, still have a fair bit of that left. And, and I also added on the brochure that was, just to jog everyone's memory. If, if anyone can think of some areas that, that we haven't thought of where we could spend the money or put it to good use, let us know. And the fifty-three Mount Street rental arrears, we, we did receive payment, but the payment was short, very odd. It looks like they didn't include the H S T. And all of the other years they have, and we've reminded them on multiple occasions, well, every year that we have to remind them to pay us, we mentioned the H S T. So on May fourth, I, well, May fifth, I contacted them and said, you know, the, the payment is short. Are you going to do anything? Didn't hear anything. So May thirteenth, I reminded them again and didn't hear anything until an email this morning saying they were going to look at it today. Now, I haven't seen any, any notification of payment come in today. But, but I'm, I'm thinking that it will come in. I really don't think this is a matter of not having money. It's a matter of them placing enough priority on it and getting it done administratively. So the payment will come after multiple reminders as usual.
Well, we got our two years. So we're, we're in better condition than we were a month ago.
Yeah. And the water and sewer bill, non-payment for disconnect, that's something I guess that could come up with people talking to counselors. We've, just because of COVID, we, we diverged from our standard operating procedure and we're more lenient. We were ready to get going in April and just say, okay, as of March thirty-first, let's look at these balances. And then in April, let's enforce them as per the policy strictly. But then the lockdown occurred again. And so we discussed it, discussed it with C A O. And we decided for, at least residentially, we'll go through the whole process with the reminder letters and the basically saying you, you may be cut off in ten days. But we're not going to actually do the physical disconnects for now. But on the commercial accounts, we've got a fair bit outstanding about, well, more than probably about half of what's owing is in some commercial accounts that really just need some reminding. And we, we are going to follow through on the disconnects there. I don't anticipate any problems, but, but the balances are large and, and very odd that, that they weren't paid.
They.
I have them in my office already. Past.
They've talked to you about payment, you mean?
Uh, Joe and I talked today in the past two notices. There's only two accounts that we're doing for commercial. And we're in my office to do tomorrow morning at eight thirty.
Okay.
Okay. Are they cop businesses that have been severely affected by COVID? Or are they just businesses that, that believe be slow?
One is a major taxpayer that, again, it's an administrative thing. And I wasn't in the office today, but Ed, I'll have to talk to you about that. I just want to see what the timing was of the, the ten-day notice. And the, you're talking about the door knockers are going out tomorrow? Ah, okay. So not the physical disconnects, but the, the ten-day notice of the door knocker. Good.
And the letters are all done. I think Joe will be going in the mail tomorrow too. So.
Yeah. Yeah. Normally what we'll do is we give the letters out and then three days later, we'll, we'll try to do the knockers. We try to have people have the letter in place before they get the door knocker on the door. But we can figure that all out tomorrow.
Okay, good. Anything else, Matt?
Uh, no, that's, that's it.
I didn't see a comment on Facebook. It started, I signed in about the cost of water in the town of Digby. So I emailed the chap, the, from the U R B or the municipal indicators, the cost of water across the province. And he quickly realized that Digby residents are getting exceptionally good value on the water reach. So.
Yeah.
Add into that conversation right there. Yeah.
So the restarting funding, do we have an automatic door opener on the front of town hall that you can just push a button?
We do.
Do we?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, both main, the door and the upper door. Yeah, I believe the upstairs. Yeah, the upstairs door has it as well. We did them both at the same time.
Yeah, what I'm going to do, the last F S M N meeting I attended, they talked about the restart. And I must get it. I mentioned at the bathroom, you look at this chart here, and it's somewhat different than what the F S M is saying. As they had more options of where we could spend our money. So with tours of infrastructure. So I'm going to find those, I'm going to find those minutes, then find out whether they're correct. If they're correct, then we have some options.
Yeah, we just have to be careful about capital. If, if it's deemed to be capital, we've been told it's definitely ineligible. But if you're modifying your, your situation, like how people move in and out solely because of COVID, that's not a capital upgrade. You're, that's an operating cost. And so we can spend a fair bit if it needs to be spent.
And if we don't spend it? Can you go back?
It has to stay in a reserve for now, we've been told. And then we can spend it in future. Now, who knows how long COVID will, will go on. And we, we don't know beyond that. There, there hasn't been a hard yes or no. It will have, whatever remains has to go back.
Okay, well, we got to find some options for that. But.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we'll move on. Director of Public Works. I was wondering where the seat bus could be, but.
Um, so let's hit the highlights down through for you. Kindness meters are supposed to be here anytime. This, when I got the email back two weeks ago, said mid-May. Started working on my operating budget and the capital budget for this fiscal year.
Just in regards to the kindness meters, I did two interviews. So all your names on the radio and in the newspaper.
Oh.
Yeah. Did another interview by radio today on kindness meter. So.
Ed, if you want to let me know when they arrive, I'll be happy to pay them for you.
Okay, yeah. I'll let, I'll let you and Tom know. That's no problem. Yeah. So Matt and I have been working on all our charges and everything from last year to make sure everything's balanced between the water commission and the town. Beautification, the final report was sent in and it's been all approved. Align, line painting, line paint has been all ordered for the, for the town, all our hatches and everything. I got a call last week that ours is being shipped directly from the factory. So hopefully we'll see it within the next two weeks so we can get that finished before June. Wastewater, just regular duties we did. The only other thing we did was we have to do three residential wells in Smith's Cove. And we did test them last month. And we had that main sewer plug at Station Four, which is down with the bandstand across from the old Warfred Building. The guy's been working in the parks, as everybody's seen. And we're working on the downtown sidewalks, the real bad spots, the cutouts and spots. It'll be new cement, once we get down through. You've probably seen today, we started pouring cement down on Admiral's Walk. And we poured some pads at Fisherman's Park, where we're doing some upgrades also. Uh, equipment, motor front tires for the tractor. Brian was out yesterday with the new sweeper heads. So we've started sweeping around town. We had to order them directly from the States because there was nothing in Canada. And the new, the new five-ton had a small oil leak, which has been fixed and the truck's back on the road. The fire hall upgrades, we're still waiting on the sprinkler hits. So we're able to finish those bathrooms up there. They forgot to order them. That's what's been taking so long. The force man in Admiral's Walk, obviously I just said we're pouring cement in the next two weeks. We started pouring cement today. Second Avenue behind the courthouse, that the rest of the four to eight inch rock for the side bank arrived today. So that'll be opening the end of May, that piece of road. New hands-free sanitize sanitization products. Most of them have been installed within all of our buildings. There was a couple we're waiting for that are on back order and they arrived last week. We've also ordered touchless faucets for our buildings, for all of our bathrooms. They're in my office. And we've installed some and will be installing the rest this month. All, all the employees took their signage traffic control course. We have one employee on medical leave and two employees wrote their O I T and passed their O I T. So just for a COVID update, we would kind of went back to when COVID started a year ago, what we're doing. So we have assigned vehicles, assigned equipment. All employees are in pairs in the vehicles and equipment. Anybody traveling together has to wear a mask. And we have to wear masks within all the public works buildings. And the lunchroom is just for breaks and lunch only. And there's only three, three allowed in there at a time because of the size of the room. We sanitize all of our doors daily and the bathroom. We take temperature checks of all of our employees every day. And we have three employees currently taking town of our public works vehicles home right now. And that's to make sure that these employees are separate from everybody else, have their own vehicle. And there's no chance of them taking anything home to their families. One thing I did want to bring up, like every year, I always ask for some capital projects pre-approval. And I was asking for twenty thousand dollars to go towards ditch filling. And majority of that's going to be used on Victoria Street to finish from the Sobies driveway to Dairy Queen driveway. And crosswalk signs, the flashers that we have, they're right around ten thousand dollars a set. And we want to continue down Warwick Street and place two more signs down through Warwick Street. And then green space upgrades at Fisherman's Park and Loyola Cemetery. I was asking for four thousand dollars to go towards some upgrades there. At Loyola Cemetery, we'd be looking at replacing and fixing the fence that's around the back of the, of the cemetery because it's hauling down and, and looks terrible.
One thing with the Loyola Cemetery, we used to years ago, and it was brought up to me a year ago by Brian McConnell. You know, we, President of the Voice Association, there used to be a sign there listing the names of the people buried there, the loyalists, which I have. So it might be something just to consider, put it back. There used to be a corner sign there. I think it was wooden and it just faded away, rotted away. But I have the list. He has the list. So, you know, something to look at in the future.
Yep. Well, and that could be probably incorporated into that, that money if we knew the names and stuff.
The names are easy. Yeah, names are easy.
A more modern sign, but that's fine. If that's something council would like to do. So, yeah.
Yeah, it's just a thought.
Ed, have you actually looked at it? Somebody actually commented about it to me. If you are traveling on Queen Street and cross Church Street or the right-hand side, there's a really steep drop-off right at the edge of the road there. Have you ever considered a railing or something there?
Um, we can definitely have a look at it. I know exactly which ditch you're talking about because that is a steep, steep ditch there. Yeah. We can look at it. Maybe possibly a guardrail or something there. So.
It's thought of people parking there at Warfred Rally. They always seem to park there. And if they're on the edge, the car is going to go right over the bank.
Yep. Yeah. What I can do is I can get a, I can get a cost on for a railing and stuff. So we know what it would cost to do it and then bring it back next month. So, yeah. I'll write it down right now.
Yeah. And just one other comment. When you're doing something at Fisherman's Park, could you just let me know?
Sure, no problem.
My phone, phone rang off the hook and I see it made Facebook and the people in that area, people in that area say it's their park. Yeah, so.
I walk it every day. So I got to give them credit. They're right. So.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I heard from a bunch of people today, by email, text messages and phone calls. So.
We always do. You know that.
Yeah, yeah. It did tell me cedar trees and a lot of roses. So it looked good, but it wasn't good today.
Rose garden in there, or rose we've taken out and all cedar. Rose garden in there, uh, rose we've taken out and all cedar trees and it'll it'll look good. They should be very happy. And the roses that we've chosen bloom all year round. Well, not all year round, but throughout the summer month. So it's not just month you have roses, you have them all through the summer and the fall. So.
Yeah, okay. Good. So what's did your thoughts take the pre-approval to council for approval of these two projects? Or three projects, I guess. What was, what was the total mark? Amount, excuse me. Forty-four. Forty-four, yeah.
What's available at existing thirty to the budget?
Yeah.
This, yeah, this will be our third year for, third or fourth year for doing these crosswalk signs. So it's a long going process. We do a couple of years. So.
This is, this would be a, a, a capital expense, be part of the capital budget. So now it doesn't really affect our it was a pre-approval of the items so that we can get them done in timely fashion. So capital budgets are funded differently, uh, not not directly, the capital does not directly uh, affect the tax rate because we pay for it differently. It does in roundabout way, but it's not. We won't have to be included in the operating budget. It will be in the capital budget, which we can
For example.
It's over a long period of time.
Yeah, for example, these ones will be funded by the capital reserve and the money is there in the reserves.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion to approve the forty-four thousand.
Does Turnbull, any other comments on it? We're still running around a little over a million in our reserve. Um. Just, it just, you know, you don't have to look at that.
Yeah, no, I I think it'd be less than that at this point. Uh, but it, yeah, I don't want to guess at a number.
Nope. Okay. Any other comments? None, then I'll call. All those in favor? I.
Right.
Any nays? None. Moving on to dangerous and unsightly. You're always our favorite.
Yeah, I'm your favorite. I'm the most hated man in Digby, I think. That's all right, though. I got big shoulders.
There's a few of us.
Well, before I, uh, before I read off, uh, the uh, dangerous or unsightly premise report, I'm just gonna go quickly over the uh, protective services report. There's no real change except for civic address, whereas uh, I sent out a notification letter that was sent to Salon by the Sea for a change of civic number located on the outside of the premise, which uh, it had read eleven Burke Street. We had two eleven Burke Street. So it now it's supposed to read nineteen Burke Street. So I have to check on that tomorrow to see if they did actually change it. It's been over uh, a couple of weeks now. So. Um. So there's no real, like I said, there's no real changes of protective services. Uh, the dangerous and then sadly report ten Carlton Street, um, still monitoring as that. I spoke with uh, the owner of that building. Uh, he has assured me that there's something being worked out, like you had mentioned before, Mr. Mayor. Uh, with the neighbor across the way.
Yeah. It needs the grass needs to be mowed there also.
Yeah, I I'll be uh, taking a look at that uh, tomorrow. That's, that's on my uh, my hit list here. I've uh, since I spoke with the, well, the C O, the C A O came up to the office on Wednesday and uh, basically told me he's taking the reins off me to let me go. So I'm going out to clear house here. So uh, getting back to my report here of uh, sixty-eight and seventy Mount Street. Um, I received complaints from the neighbors regarding the amount of cumulative loose garbage and amongst the property in the wood line. I contacted the, the landlord of these two properties. And I explained about the loose garbage in and around, including the wood line, to have it cleaned up as soon as possible. Uh, this is all this report obviously uh, was previous to what's going to happen now. So just keep that in mind. Um. So I gotta do a follow up on that property, those two properties, uh, forty-three West Street. I had received complaints concerning the amount of loose garbage that had been piled in back of the proper the part of the property in amongst the wood line. As the administrator dangerous and then slightly had contacted the owners of the property and explained the situation of the property becoming unsightly. The owner explained to me that majority of his materials that he collected and piled in the back part of his property, he will have use for. Uh, the owner stated that he would thin out the non-essential materials and arrange to have them taken off his property. So he started doing that, but I'll I'll be going back there also to do a follow up. Um. Into a lot of these properties that I'm I'm looking at throughout the town. There are going to be a few that are going to be uh, costly and clean up. And I, I think we were aware of the ones I had mentioned before in previous reports, uh, the one up on uh, Sydney Street. Actually, there's two on Sydney Street alone. And one just off of West Street. So I I gotta have a talk with the C A O and also with uh, Ed in regards to cost for that and when and where, well, not where, but when it will take place. So, and they're, they're major eye source and and one's gotten to be a, a point where it's basically a, a junkyard. So, and you can see it from not only Sydney Street, but you can see it from Victoria Street. Um. I've spoken with uh, with the um, manager of uh, Western Region Housing Authority in regards to a lot of their properties. And uh, I, I went and explained to her that we have a new bylaw under dangerous nor unsightly. So I basically gave her the rundown of that and uh, like I had had to mention to the C E O previously that uh, when dealing with a lot of these uh, property owners, some of them are rental properties. So I have to go after the landlord or or the owner of that building. So I do have quite an extensive list to go through. So all I ask is counselors and the Mr. Mayor and Deputy Mayor, please be patient, but I will get on to it and get after them. Well, the uh, the phone call that we all received concerning our, our favorite uh, landlord.
Hmm.
I sent the, the C E O some pictures again today of three of his properties. Um. I hope that some of the issues that the the uh, residents concern will be locked at and cleaned up. And there's and I believe you have the one that I sent picture to Leslie that she said she was going to turn over to you on the Monte Garo. The old.
Yeah, I have that on my list here. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the fair to Bruce, he's taken a lot of heat from two or three of us over the last week. Well, I, but we're taking heat from people this year, particularly so. It's uh,
and rightfully so.
Yeah, some of those properties have uh, looked pretty bad. So Bruce, how, with the adoption of the new policy and the hundred and fifty dollar administrative fee and all that kind of stuff. Is that going to be kicking in on some of these now? Or you gotta go and give their due diligence?
Well, what I want to do, uh, Mr. Mayor is, is make, make my list out and then I want to go after the, the major, the major ones that stand out.
Yes.
So now, like, like, uh, I had stated before, I had spoke with uh, the, the manager of Western Housing Region. And I told, told her that, you know, there is administration fee that each, you know, each time I called back here that the hundred and fifty dollars is going to be applied. So that kind of, oh, wait, I didn't know that, you know, sort of thing. So and uh, with uh, the, the landlord that uh, councillor Turnbull was uh, was just mentioning there earlier. I had also uh, given a copy of the of the, the bylaw to him and uh, for somebody to explain to him that you know, this is serious business now. This is not just go clean up your, your yard. You know, it's repetitive and I, you know, I don't want that each time. I want a one-time stain. So this is, this is what's going to happen now.
Yeah, it'll make your job easier longer. It'll be tough for the first little while, but at the end of it, it's a little.
It, it is. I mean, I've already had people slam the door in my face. And I also had a gentleman, a elderly gentleman on King Street, uh, said he was gonna play, put in a complaint to the bylaw officer at the town hall. So I didn't have the heart to tell him that I was the bylaw officer. And I had my, my phone in my hand. So I was waiting for that call standing right there.
Yeah, okay.
But uh, yeah, I, 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 I do appreciate the council and uh, C A O and yourself and uh, you know, give me the extra uh, pull behind my punches.
Yeah, good. Okay, that's good. Anything else? No, go ahead.
I just got a question for Council Turnbull. Did you say that you sent me some pictures today?
I did.
Oh, I didn't get them.
I will send them again later on.
Okay, so I just checked, I was checking the email there. Check my junk folder to make sure that it can go AWOL somewhere, but I didn't, I didn't get them. So.
No problem.
Back. Again.
I will.
All right, thank you.
Okay, if that's it for you, Bruce, then we'll move on. Correspondence, uh, letter from the area, Digby Area Board of Trade saying they support. You know, any efforts to expand the bus route in the town.
Yeah.
I know the CEOs have been speaking uh, about that. Uh, the hint has been, yes, it's a lot of work, maybe something to work on this fall. And the hint's also been that it's going to be a lot of money for us. So uh, you know, we're, I don't know what we're paying now, Tom, five, six thousand, Matt?
Four, is it not?
I don't know.
Yeah, four, yeah, four.
Yeah, but the number, if, yeah, if, if, if the route worked or yeah, if the route could work, they threw up numbers of twenty, twenty-five thousand. So so there'll be some work on that in the fall. Is that fair to say, Tom? Another look at it? Yeah. Yeah. And I mentioned that to to the chap that signed this letter. I thanked him for spending our money.
Uh, did you ask him if they had any money to contribute?
Yeah, I will. I did, but I will. Yeah. Okay, new business. Draft expanded service hours and four day work week. I did a lot of reading online, various universities about this.
Okay, so I guess uh, basically, certainly the report. And uh, modified work schedules allow employees to better meet the demands of work and family, whether that means caring for children, nailing spouse or elderly parents in need of assistance. Employers also benefit from these modified schedules. The most compelling of which are cost savings and increased productivity. So background in the municipality of District of Guyborough, um, started the four day work week. A nine-month product pilot program back in June of twenty twenty. Um. The results of their trial were overwhelmingly positive and they have recently made the modified work week permanently. Yes, by the additionally did be uh, began on April the fifth of twenty twenty-one. And there is a tri- nine-month trial. Um. The town of Digby Public Works Department is currently doing a trial of a similar four-day work week schedule. And I would like to propose a similar modified work week trial for the town hall staff. It, it is pro- proposed that the way it will work under the four-day work week is that the staff are divided into two teams. The teams are separated. So each team will be, there will be staff in the office of the C A O and the finance department, Monday to Friday. And the bylaw enforcement office will staff four days per week. Team A works Monday to Thursday. Team B will work Tuesday to Friday. The schedule then rotates every four months so that each team has its share of Mondays or Fridays off. Preliminary discussions with the town hall staff supportive of the modified work brief. However, as was done in Guyborough, if the staff member wishes to opt out of the trial, it will be allowed. The staff hours would be from eight A M to five P M Monday to Friday. Is an increase from the current hours, which are eight thirty to four thirty. Each staff member would work four days a week for nine-hour workday with a half hour paid lunch included. The total hours of each staff number per week will be thirty-five hours. Staff currently work thirty-five hours each week and have one hour of unpaid lunch each day. Salaries will remain the same. It is important to note that the entire staff will be working from Tuesday to Thursdays. It is only Mondays and Fridays where the individual teams will, will be the only staff at the office. So there will only be two days each week that will actually be affected. But the team will be divided so that each team is capable of handling the office duties on those two days of each week. So using cross-training. Uh, everybody can do somebody else's job for the most part. Staff is also staff also understands that in rare instances, they have to be available if needed on the day off. So if, if we're in, in a crisis situation or in an emergency situation and uh, or some other such thing and the person is required to work on the day off. Be uh, required to work on the day off. Not unlike the weekends now, if we're required to come in on Saturday or Sunday or whatever you do. So we have a small staff at the town hall, six in total. In order to make this work, I request that council and committee meeting be moved to and I'm suggesting Tuesday instead of Monday for the trial period. This would allow the office of the C A O to be staff five days a week. Allow for the four-month scheduled rotation. But uh, and I have also drafted the expanded service hours and four-day work policy. For council's consideration.
Ed, how's it work for you? No, I just threw a question at Ed. Yeah.
It's, it actually works great. Our services aren't affected. Um, ours is a little bit different because we, the guys, majority of the guys work four and a half days a week. And then um, with myself and through other employees that we uh, we do a five day and then the following week we just do a four day with our Friday off. Um. Since we went back to, with the winter time, we, we didn't do it. But since we've gone back to it, um, majority of the employees, their, their attitudes are, are so much better and it's been a real good, good boost for the, for the team. So and I really think that it would be really good for town hall too, if they were able to, to try it. So.
I know a large, a lot of organizations have gone that way. So as I said, I, over the last week, looked at a lot of university studies and policies on it and uh, generally they say it works. The only thing I said to Tom was, you know, the, the public perception of suddenly working four days a week, even though town halls open five, sometimes it's not good. The one thing I said is as long as staff comes to work and they're ready to work at eight o'clock. So you get there a quarter day, you're ready to work at eight o'clock. Instead of coming at eight, you fiddle around, you don't get underway until eight thirty, quarter to nine, then you don't gain anything. So I was a little concerned about that, but so that would be an adjustment, I think, because most people, well, a lot aren't ready to work at eight. But a lot of us go to work before eight too. So. Uh, council, what do you think? Uh, council, what do you think?
Let's see.
I have proposed timeline for the trial.
Wow, nine, nine, did you have nine months, Tom, or?
It's a nine-month trial in total. And I wanted to try, try and, and get it started the first part of June, if possible.
Only question I have is, I know you rotated every four months. Um, why wouldn't it be two months? Because I mean, some people have, uh, Monday off in the summer for the four months, then not in the winter type thing, so like the Monday or Friday, so the first group or whatever would have every Friday off all summer, but then the other half wouldn't get any summer Fridays off at all. So I'm just wondering if it'd be every month instead of four months or a different rotation that way?
I mean, that's something that, uh, that, that's something that definitely can be looked at. Uh, I took this template from what the, the district had done. And the reason that the district went to a rotation other than not having a rotation was because, uh, Friday was almost everybody that wanted to take the Friday off. Definitely wouldn't work. So basically, that's why, why they chose the four months. I didn't really ask. But, uh, in, in the rotation, though, I think it's, you know, I, I think that definitely we could, we could look at, at that, that's a rotation isn't a problem. But I guess the, the, the biggest thing, the biggest change is whether council wants to change the, the, the meeting night for those two meetings, because if that, if the municipality, uh, did, like, council change. And, uh, so if, if it doesn't, if we don't change, then ba- basically, uh, it's not gonna work for, for the office of the C A O, because basically, uh, we have to be here on Mondays. And sometimes we have to be here on, on Friday, so, and, you know. I wanted the C A's, uh, O's office to be open five days a week, not four days a week.
And when you say C A O, that's you unless?
That's me unless, I, yeah. Then two, two of us in, in, in the finance department has three, and Bruce makes up the other other, uh, employee within, within the town hall. Now, hi- his office would, uh, that basically be closed one day, one, one day a week, but. But we do have, uh, um, it is the is the, sort of the deputy who can, uh, look at something, if something does come up, up in that day, it needs to be addressed, so.
Are you on? Well, I guess, Ed, if you do that, Ed and Bruce could look and see whether they are on opposite teams with the different departments, so one is around.
Yeah.
If Bruce, if Bruce was to take Mondays, then it would be no issue at all. Because I own every second Friday off, I wonder how mine works, so. This is just saying. Bruce and I talked about that before, so.
I did look at a couple, like I said, university reports, and, uh, most of them were in favor of going to that format with the extended hours, the daily hours. I didn't, actually, I don't think I found anything negative other than that most, it's a change. Yeah.
A lot of them are doing it also.
Yeah, it's Taco Tuesday, that might be a problem, but.
I, I guess, yeah, that gets back to the suggestion of, instead of four months straight, because, I mean, I, I do have fire practice as well, and I mean, it's what? Seven thirteen now, we're usually, you know, an hour and a half or whatever, so I, I guess. I don't mind changing to Tuesday as long as it wasn't like four months straight. That's, because I, chances are, I would miss a lot of training. That, that's my only.
Basically, the change would be for the full nine months.
Months, yeah. Changing it around, you wouldn't be able to do that, yeah.
Because ba- basically, in order for it to re- to work for for Leslie and I, in order for us to each have a day off, so basically, if Leslie takes Fridays off, I'll be working Fridays, and I'll take Mondays off, and she'll be working Mondays, right?
So really, the window for those meetings is either Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday.
Yeah, that's very, yeah.
Yeah. And so, so it would have to be Tuesday, because a lot of our other meetings are Wednesday and Thursday nights. So it would have, it would have to be a Tuesday, otherwise we'd have to change everybody's meetings.
Yeah. And that means changing with the district, and that just, yeah, piles on. Generally, many of the whole, sometimes they're two hours, sometimes it's three hours, but generally they're an hour, but.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, Mike, uh, and Tuesday nights sometimes are gonna be a problem for me, but that's just the way it is. And for others too, so.
Well, I mean, as far as council is concerned, if you look at how many first Mondays of the month follow holiday.
Yeah.
We always not being Tuesdays anyway.
That's right.
Yeah, and so we would avoid, we would avoid that.
Holiday shift.
It would be, it would fall on Tuesdays anyway, so we, the, the holidays wouldn't matter, other than the fact that technically, it says if you're, uh, in, in the policy, it's, it says that if you, you take, uh, the following day off, if a holiday falls on your day off, right, but, uh, that, that's not a problem for me, or, and I'm not, don't want to speak to Leslie, but I don't figure it'd be a problem for her to, if Monday is a holiday and it's one of our days off, then we could take Wednesday off instead of the Tuesday, so that's, you know, it would definitely make it, make it work. Right? But, I mean, ba- basically, um, you know, in we have July, usually, sometimes July weekend, August weekend, and September, those three months usually the first Monday of the month follows, follows on those holidays.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not too concerned about those ones, because it's only meeting night over there anyway, right, so.
Okay.
And they just.
Any other comments from anybody? Does this would require a motion to go to council for, but you're talking, Tom, uh, wanting to work this June the first?
Uh, ba- ba- basically, I mean, we get, I, we can wait until it's not a problem to wait until after the, the council meeting, and I put a date there, just so we'd have a date, right?
Today, okay, because.
We can start the week following, following the ca- council's meeting, so the council can approve it. And then that way, it, uh, the council meetings would be moved, because that would, uh, it could require a motion of council as well, right? Move the council meetings starting in July, the Tuesdays, the community home meetings.
Yeah, okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we take it to council.
I'll second that. Okay, any further discussion on, done? We kind of discussed the motion before we got there. Okay, all those in favor taking it to council for approval, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any contrary-minded? None? Motion carried. Draft, yeah, hey, oh, Tom, anything else on that?
So we, uh, just had the po- policy, and, uh, the ba- basis of the policy is the, the, sort of the regulations and the guidelines that would go with the program. We'll get down into the not, not, not some bolts, so, so to speak, so it's there, and, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
To make that recommendation to council as well, if you're, and then anybody sees anything, they can, uh, we can discuss it at council point of pass, so.
Yeah, so I want to make a motion to take that policy to council.
I'm making.
Seconder.
I'll second.
Well, okay. All those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Any contrary-minded? Motion is carried. Adopt the flower box hanging basket program. I spoke to the C A O about this. I was approached by a couple people wondering now they're aware that, uh, we've lost our volunteers this year. Uh, just because age and bad knees. So I was approached by a couple of them, whether they could actually take care of the a flower box, like, mainly, so Tom and Ed took it from there. So Tom, you could speak about it.
I guess, uh, in my report that again, it's just positive, we, we put sponsor flower box, because adopt a flower box is better, that's and we can certainly change that from sponsor to adopt. Basically, we use the same program or, um, that for the sponsor or bench program, so that's why we use that word. So, but the doc is not a, not a bad thing either. I guess, uh, so the town in Digby would be providing an opportunity to do adopt a flower box or hang basket at Fishman Memorial Park, the Promenade, Digby Center, Lower Board Rock, and Edmost Walk, Water Street, and Sydney Street. First-time adoption of the box or or hang basket, which includes a customized plaque and installation with the, I guess, the sponsor's name. There's a hundred-dollar sponsorship, and, uh, in, so the sponsorship or the adoption is renewed annually, uh, for fifty dollars a year. The maintenance and the watering of the flowers will, will be still, would be the responsibility of town and Digby Public Works. And I know that's a little bit different than, I, I think, what the mayor had, had indicated. Um, we did have a discussion at the senior management. Uh, can, can cer- certain this, and I guess the reason that we've put that one, uh, and sort of put that in is a, a suggestion or recommendation, is that we were a little concerned that, uh, how some people may look after their sponsored or adopted boxes. Right, it gets left up to them to maintain them. And they say, well, this looks good to me, but it may not look good to us or other members of the public or whatever, we may get complaints. I guess standardization, we wanted to try to, try to keep as much standardization as possible.
Well, everybody can grow four marijuana plants, so what's wrong with that?
That's fine, too. Yeah, I, I don't know how they're gonna keep them from being stolen all the time.
Yeah, no, I, I was asked, I, I kind of agree with Tom and Ed on it. I was asked by a business and by an individual if they could adopt the pot, the pot, uh, plant or implant their own flowers and their own stuff in it, so I guess having some consistency would look good, so. Yeah.
I, I, is that reasoning for reckoning, and what we recommend is that, uh, right now, we have pretty much it's standard across all the, the, the flower pots, uh, hanging baskets that are, are all the same, and usually the flower boxes are all with the same type of flowers or whatever. And, and everything is, is, is consistent. So, and, especially, ba- basically, if, uh, the fifty dollars a year, hundred dollars is to pay for the plaque initially. Hopefully, they'll renew every year, so you don't have to buy a new plaque every year for somebody. Uh, but fifty dollars a year will almost pay, uh, what we would be paying our student or whatever, or, or youth if, especially to get the grant, right? So basically, it would look after the maintenance, right?
So if there isn't any uptake, they're still, all the flower boxes would be full?
Yes, they would be. We're gonna plant them. Here is, it's a lot like the bench program. We're gonna provide benches, and then we allow people to put the plaque sponsor, or put the, the memorial plaques on. This is just gonna be, we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, sponsor them so, so that they have a name on them.
Well, the worst, as well as the benches did, uh, we shouldn't have any problem.
Any comments on it, or thoughts on it?
I think it's worth a try.
Uh, uh, it's community engagement is what I always, more you get them engaged, the, you know.
I agree.
What's your bales think? Red, white, and blue flowers? What do you think, Paul? Red, white, and blue flowers?
Not a chance.
If there are, if, if we want to proceed, then we need a motion to take it to council for approval.
Can I just mention one thing, uh, but I need to investigate. I didn't think of it until now, but, uh, with donations and donation receipts, if there's a value given to the individual, um, that's not simply a, a contribution, you know, the, their names going on it, uh, there, there's a hard asset here, the plaque. Uh, we may not be able to give the receipt for the full amount, but I'll have to, uh, to just double-check that, uh, to find out. Um, because oftentimes you'll see, uh, certain programs similar to this, uh, you give a, give an amount, say a hundred dollars, and you get a receipt for seventy-five, but, uh, I'll have to investigate just to see exactly.
So that, that is the case, Matt. I, I know from doing some fundraisers, and maybe, Mike, you can speak to it too, but, uh, I've been told before by the Children's Wish Foundation that if people are receiving a certain, you know, level of experience or a tangible thing, then you, you don't get a receipt for a full, a full value.
Exactly. If you pay fifty dollars for a meal and the meal has a value of twenty dollars, uh, well, you know, you paid fifty, you only get a thirty-dollar receipt, because that's your contribution.
Yeah.
Now, the way the politicians get around it is they call it advertising, so that's how, that's how they get away with it for most, uh, sign it today, you, so probably for the businesses, you could probably do it as an advertising. But. Huh, yeah.
That's what it would be, and those plaques are gonna be a hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's right, so.
I don't think.
How did it work on with the, the benches? We had, we didn't run with this problem, do we?
Uh, we haven't given tax receipts on the benches, as far as I know.
Okay.
And I didn't, I don't think it was our intent to give tax receipts on these ones either.
I, I, I think you need to.
No, no, I don't think you do either.
Uh, if someone asks, so be it, right? I mean, you're not gonna get to ding for, for one or two.
I mean, if we give a receipt to somebody for whatever, and they, I think it's up to them to plead their case to their accountant, or.
That's right.
We try to claim it, yeah.
Yeah. Well, you know, we have to be careful not to be issuing receipts that aren't, aren't, uh, yeah, we could give a receipt, but if we're giving an official tax receipt, it has to say on it, this is an official tax receipt for donation purposes.
Yeah.
To look at that.
Yeah. I'd love to have Rev. Canada commit and audit this. Yeah. Okay, uh, so I want to make a motion to take this to council.
I'll make that motion, take the council. I'll second it.
I'll second it. Any discussion? None? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, okay, can we have a motion to win camera? We already are.
We go in camera, and the other camera.
Seconder?
Second.
They all agree to go in camera? Okay, so, wrote a camera, so we need a motion to, regards to the, uh, salary scales.
Uh, we won't mention the flagging. Tom, you mentioned that, so. Yeah. It's just the cost of living, so we're not looking at any large increases or anything, so.
I'll make that motion for the salary scale.
Seconder. Who is Peter? And if further discussion, that goes to council, so we can have more discussion of that time, if need be. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any days, none? That was the last thing on the agenda, so, so wants to go mow grass, make a motion, do so. No?
Save the bees, no mow May.
And.
Go, least go.
Okay, that was a motion by Will, seconded by Paul, was it?
Sure.
Good, okay.
There you go, try and catch a berry.